Or you'd have it go, I guess that would be my question.
Well, with respect to the striping, I look at it from a little different perspective. I mean, some of these things are things that we say, this is what we want done. And let's say we have a year that we don't have as much snow that we have to plow, so he has some extra money in his budget. So maybe that's adding another cash base in someplace or doing some color work, which is pretty much his call, working within his budget. But it's this board's call as to what roads we need striped or we want striped. And I believe the ones that we stripe now are the ones that are most heavily traveled. If we're anticipating striping additional roads, it makes sense to me that it would be the next most heavily traveled roads and/or some that have particular hazards associated with them. And I would certainly look to the police department for their opinion as to what roads beyond what we're doing now would benefit from striping from a traffic safety as well as a traffic count situation. I live off a new road. You know, there's been some talk about maybe we should stripe there. It isn't that, it doesn't seem to be that heavily traveled a road to me.
Well, the other part of it, it's just that, I mean, once you decide, okay, we're gonna start adding two more roads, we're gonna put these stripes into three roads for the, forever. It's not something you give up.
Well, the, right, once we say, these are the roads that we're striping, that's part of what gets built into the striping every year. So it's not just, okay, this year we got some extra money, let's try some extra roads. Because next year, we're gonna pay back in there and people have become accustomed to striping there, and that's what they're gonna expect. So that's why I say, rather than just saying, well, let's double the amount of striping we do, if we're gonna take that approach, I think we need to understand the ongoing impact of that and do the ones that would benefit most from it, from a safety standpoint and from traffic counts and those sorts of things.
So you're looking for a striping proposal brought to us in eighteen?
Right, right.
And that seems to be the reasonable argument.
Absolutely. And rather than sitting here in our budget conversation and saying, oh yeah, and by the way, let's do a few more roads. I also think it makes perfect sense to have this discussion go on for a period of time and when members of the community have a particular interest that they have in striping, that they've got an opportunity to come talk with us or through the great mind, get back to this board and say, we really feel that this road needs striping on. Then we can engage Chief Segura.
I think that's what I had to do, having a piece of both.
Really? Doesn't matter to you what roads get striped, right?
No, I'd like to see them all.
You know, it's, and there's no question when the weather's implement, that having striping, particularly the fog lines, is beneficial.
We noticed the difference even plowing. It seems like it's beneficial to us. Because I don't see the yellow line when I'm plowing, because it's snow covered. So I don't know where I am exactly along the center of the line. In that wing, I'm basing everything off the being on center with that wing. So I'm not hitting stuff. But what I can do is when I'm scraping, I look back in the mirror and I can kind of see where I'm located. And I found it to be very beneficial, as far as that goes. Less damage to the wings and, I know that I'm on my side of the road when a car's coming the other way. Before that, it's a little bit more difficult to judge how much room to give somebody for passing up coming opposite direction.
Okay. I had another item, I could bring it up, you mean to cut short. You've been negotiating with the Conservation Commission on the knotweed issue in town. What did, how much money have you put aside there? It seems that you're the, you two guys are joined at the hip, correct? And there was a large project behind your building, right?
Well, that's the area that we had a discussion on, which I did walk. And there is a large amount of knotweed out there. An access for a truck to get out there would be critical first.
It also would open up the easement, correct?
There's, yep, there's several ideas that are.
And what have you, what have you budgeted for that project?
I don't have a budget for that. I don't know the cost of that at this point as well.
Where would it come out of, fall maintenance?
Well, is it on the conservation property?
No, it's on town property.
Well, but town-owned property, right? Part of the Great Meadow town-owned property?
It's the access to the Great Meadow, correct?
Yes, I think it falls in the property that actually belongs with the township.
Okay.
Or the highway garage. I believe it's.
So aside from the, you know, wanting to get rid of knotweed, is there a use for this access or property or whatever?
I think that the park, is it the Park and Rex has?
No, the Conservation Commission. Steve Wingate's been talking with you, right?
Yes. I think what they're talking about is in the future, they're gonna have some kind of hiking trail around through the, out to the Great Meadows.
So you have no plans this year to do any work there, correct?
If, if it comes about, we'll take care of it, we'll figure it out.
How?
Well, we're gonna, we'll try to work in the budget the best we can.
That's why I'm asking the question.
I'm hoping that they cut the trail. I think that's, you know, the biggest thing they have to do first is cut an access for a truck to get out there. If that happens, then we're gonna have to.
This has been a project that's been talked about for, this is the third year, right?
Well, this was the first year that I actually was out there with Steve and actually looking at it and trying to evaluate the situation.
I'll change the subject then. Well, there's no money in the budget for that, obviously.
We didn't find it.
Unless you complain it.
Are you sure it went to?
On November thirteenth.
And maybe that doesn't belong in the highway budget. Maybe it belongs in the conservation budget. It's a conservation project. And conservation's got a bunch of money left this year, so I don't know why they're saying, oh, let's get the road agent to do it, you know? But anyway, that's separate from this conversation, I would say.
Yeah, okay. The last thing I'll bring up, because we're running behind, and I have about four or five others, is on November thirteenth, there was a list of mowing projects. Did you get estimates on that?
I suppose I would have that list. Well, I think a lot of them fell on top of our normal mowing. What I had was the transfer station, which we usually do that when we have the, we mow that.
This is a project, if you remember, is cutting back to the boundaries. The brush is growing up, cutting the brush that's around the buildings. And then.
Okay, I thought it was the banking that we talked, we discussed.
The banking.
Yep.
The last people to cut the bank is the electric light company, correct?
We mowed that before. We reach up as far as we can. I don't know whether it goes to the top, but we get up there probably twenty-five feet.
Well, the project that was in visit, in visiting, thinking about, was literally mowing back to the boundary lines.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood that. And I don't know how far that is, the distance between where we normally do and where the boundary line is. I don't know what that distance is.
So you have no estimate on that project?
Uh, no.
Okay, next one?
You have Lake Street mowing the banking. We normally, we usually do that as well. It's on our normal list of.
Okay, to the top of the bank?
We normally, well, again, we reach up as far as we can. And then I believe the cemetery or whoever owns the top of that, they hire somebody to do down to us, so it gets done.
So there's no estimate on that?
Well, it gets done. We do what we normally do.
When was it last done, sir? I lived there. I'm sorry.
I don't know, like, three years ago. It's, we're behind, obviously, we're behind on that. But it has been done. We have known that multiple times over the years. We're behind, we need to get caught up.
Next project?
You have Nineteen Mile Bay to brush. I don't have an estimate to go out into the wetlands, if that's the area we're thinking. But we do usually do a lap around that with the mower.
This was the brush that's along the beach that can get trimmed down to three feet?
We can certainly do that one more down with the mower.
Is there an estimate for that?
It's very little. It's not gonna be time-consuming with the mower. That's probably an hour's project.
Next project?
As far as mowing, so.
Yep.
I just have the beach and Nineteen Mile Bay park.
Parking lot?
Okay.
Okay, the brush is encroached from the woods.
I'm guessing that's about an hour, so we're probably looking at about a hundred dollars.
Okay, then the brush needs to be cut down, so the bank's in a mode once a year, correct?
Yep.
So that's an hour project?
I think it should be done in an hour at the mower, correct? Yes.
So should we have a brush-cutting mower or something?
Well, it's the roadside mower that has the arm that reaches out.
Right, we're talking about brush that hasn't been cut for four or five years, that's grown up on the bank, correct? The perimeter of the parking lot?
Yep. You don't think that's enough?
I'm sorry. Next project?
That's all I have.
River reach, okay.
Well, I guess I have that as part of.
Just Lake Road.
Lake Street, yeah.
I have other issues, but I'm running, we're running fifteen minutes behind for the next lady. Are we done with him for today, or do we ask him to hang for a few minutes? Yeah, there's a motion on the table. Wait. Is it, is it time to vote?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, remove the question. Read it again, Karen?
Bill moved to add an additional seven-five-hundred to crack ceiling for a total budget of one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-six-hundred. Seconded by you.
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes through zero. Is there anything else we want to talk to him about today? Other things that involve vehicles and buildings and whatever?
You're all set for Tuesday, when it's actually gonna finally snow?
Yeah. I think it's gonna snow tomorrow, to be honest with you. We talked to three-six, uh, three-six.
Really?
Yeah, so the latest report I heard.
Oh, I watched last night, it was one to three. So you watched today, it's three to six.
Uh, tomorrow will be.
Well, you know, if you're prepared for three to six, you're ready. And if we just get it dusted, then it's easy to adjust, right?
We're ready. Yep, yep, we're ready. I hope it doesn't smell, but we're ready.
And Karen, on that budget, that's, we're adding an additional line in the budget for accident.
Yes, thank you, yes, I didn't, I do have that, thank you.
So good work.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thanks, spring.
It's Tuesday.
Yes. Come on down, I apologize for running over. My name is Lloyd Wood.
Uh, you're the pro.
Okay.
Hello, Joe, how are you today?
Thank you for reading, thank you for your patience.
All right, I hope this will be a lot easier, more simple.
Well, we put everybody through their.
Oh, the ringer?
Urgent.
Oh my god, all right, well, I think you have the sheet in front of you, don't you?
Agriculture, we do.
Yes, the newly formed, one-year-old Tuftonboro agricultural.
What number is it? It's other conservation.
Forty-six nineteen.
And we have gotten together and realized that we have a need to do a budget. And so these are all estimates. And four of the five items are one-time expenses. And the first item is paid to Spiderweb Gardens, and they come out and they post their different garden plots and the plows over the field. And at the end of the season, he, I guess he doesn't do it at the end. Yes, he does. And he cleans it up at the end of the season.
And he also fertilizes, right?
And he fertilizes. So last year was fifteen hundred, we got probably a bit more this year. The second item are plants for the pollinator garden, which was the perennial gardens. And we figured that next year, after twenty-eighteen, it will probably, this is the year. Yes. And also this year, we are hoping to collect some plants from donations from other people. So it's a nominal amount, and it may well, it may well not even commit it to a hundred. The sign for the community garden is one-time. And it is planned to be along the road, so that when the public passes, they see it. The sign we have now is more for comments and different postings and so forth. And we think it's gonna be between three and four, three and five hundred dollars. And then we have, we'd like to get a composting arrangement set up out of the community garden. And at some point, we'd also like to have it somehow incorporated into the community and with the school. There is a consultant out of Maine who Ron Zunkus has met and listened to up in Multonboro when they did a composting seminar last year. And it's possible that we might be able to get him to come and do a little consulting on that setup.
So you should probably get Plague Gallagher in your conversations when you do that. Because he's probably.
Yeah, I.
Can the composting also include the grass clippings from the cemetery that are just dumped in a pile on your property?
We think so. And this, this, this composting thing initially would just start right here.
However.
At the community garden, excuse me.
People before you said, no, they didn't want to do that because there are alleged chemicals in the grass.
From the farmers that I have spoken to, there are very few chemicals today that are used that are totally detrimental to anything. That's speaking with a blueberry grower, so, you know.
Right now, there's a truck full of materials.
It'd be a great start, wouldn't it? So we would hope to be able to take that up. And I'll have to do, you'll have to do a little more research on it.
Working with cemetery.
Just confirm it, confirm it with Philly, probably. Seems to be an excellent source and very known to share his.
When he was Sexton, he had Cory Hunter just take the clippings and put them in his pile. And when we needed some compost, he'd make it available. The last couple of years, that's changed.
I think sometimes.
And when I last spoke to him, he'd still do it.
Yeah. I think sometimes there's a big catchword pesticide. It immediately puts people back to the times when the rivers ran green and brown and so forth. From what I understand today, from talking to different farmers and so forth, there really isn't a lot out there now that can really hurt you. And by the time the bugs get done with it, I think that it doesn't kill the worms, I think we're safe.
Sure work.
So this is, this is pretty much where we are. We'd like three thousand dollars from you, or put into the budget at least. And if that works out, that's great. If we don't use it all, we will turn it back to you. And that's my little presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for waiting. Did you have no?
Did I roll my eyes a lot? I hope not.
No.
It was pretty, it was pretty interesting, actually. You know, considering the different things that you don't always think of that the road agent has to do. And I do thank you, I haven't called her, so thank you. Here's your.
Try to say.
See you, nice to meet you both.
Thank you.
And see you, Bill. Thanks, Karen.
You're welcome.
What, oh my, did I? That's a good idea.
I'm gonna talk about Millwall, yeah. And there's a breakout she in here.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, the last time that we did herbicide treatment, if you look back, was in two thousand thirteen. And what we experienced this past year through harvesting told us that in some areas, we're fighting a losing battle with the harvesting. And so the state has recommended, and through a contract, have provided us with a proposal for herbicide treatment for twenty-seventeen, uh, twenty-eighteen. And that's for, both for fragmites, which is the invasive weed growing along the shore at Nineteen Mile, as well as for herbicide treatment in existing heavily infested locations. So if you look at the two of those, that's, between them is seventeen thousand-two-hundred dollars. There's an item called water, it's nine hundred dollars. When we treated herbicide before, because we have some lake drinkers, we provide them with bottled water that they can drink during the thirty-day period that the chemical dissipates. The other item on here for diaper harvesting, that's just an estimate on my part because we don't have qualified proposal at this point. The state is still working to find somebody that.
That's the DASH?
That's, that's right, that's used DASH, which is diaper-assisted suction harvesting. So that's how we end up coming up to.
And the lake host?
Lake host is.
Is that a donation or?
That is, that is a donation that we make to New Hampshire Lakes to help fund the boat ramp education program. And we have, in Tuftonboro, there are three locations that have lake hosts in the summer. At Mirror Lake, at Union Wharf, and at Lake Road. And it's not.
Do a great job.
And, and they, they do. And Mary Ann Murray has been coordinating that effort for the town for a number of years. And she has some folks working on it now that seem to, I know she's hopeful she can get them back next year. Because they have a nice way of interacting with people at the ramp.
No complaints.
And, you know, our, the whole purpose is to help everybody understand that as we move the boats in and out, particularly from lake to lake, we're always at risk of carrying these invases with them. And there are ways that we can minimize that. By the way, we drain and clean out the boats in between lakes.
The seven-fifty Millwall joint board, that's just a dues?
That is the annual contribution to the, the intermunicipal association that's now in bothboro and Tuftonboro that owns the Dash boat. That covers the fixed costs that the, that the joint board has. And it is down from, it was, well, it used to be, yeah. Several years, it was fifteen hundred.
You had two boats.
And, and that, yep. It's been down, this year it was seven fifty, for twenty-eighteen, that's the.
Certainly it's been a successful program.
It has. It's.
So is your expectation that this twenty-thousand-dollar increase is gonna be one year?
Yes.
And then they drop back?
And, and it will be a requirement when we're doing herbicide treatment. And.
And are you thinking that happens every five years, four years?
Probably three or four years.
It's, it seems that the pattern, not just here, but in other towns, is that every several years you have to get it hard again. But, and the state program does include a reimbursement. I don't know what the reimbursement's gonna be at this moment. Of course, it's the material from a budget standpoint, because it's after the fact.
It's a gross amount, right?
It's what goes into our unfunded balance that we can lose in future years. And that's why I don't. Can I answer any other questions on Millwall?
So I'm gonna make a motion, should I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I make a motion that we fund other conservation line forty-six nineteen, our alliance from forty-six nineteen, for twenty-eight thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes through zero. Any other business to come before the?
Who do you have left? We've just got the things on the, on the agenda for Monday.
General buildings, I know, is left. I need to do some more work on that. And I think that might be it after that.
We've got health agencies.
And docks and bridges and all that.
Do we have health and health agencies?
It's on for Monday.
Yeah.
I can ask Diane if you'd like to confirm, but I think it's.
Do we have other highways, docks and bridges?
That's on Monday as well.
Yeah. So, yeah, Jack will do that, right?
Yeah.
Jack will do that as well.
Yep.
And there's some push on the, on the Warren articles, I heard?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand the budget committee would like to see them beginning of January, and I. So we're talking about a working session next, next Friday to work on. I don't know that we're gonna be at a point to deliver them at that point, but I think, you know.
Once we get the whole budget done, I think we can take the work. But I, yeah.
Let's give it a try. If you guys will not come, I have to come in anyway, sign checks, so I don't mind being here.
It's Friday?
Yeah, fifteenth.
You already agreed, Chip, you said it earlier.
I must have had something to do on Friday.
Yeah, that's right.
Your garage is on the bill.
And now shut that project down.
I did have a question. Going back to, when we did the legal budget, and we broke out some expenses for this year, Diane has not moved those, because she didn't, she wasn't, it wasn't clear whether we just wanted them for information or not. I guess my thought is, as long as we've identified where they are, let's move them now. It's just a piece.
Yeah, that's how we voted on it.
Well, she was looking for some clarification on that.
What number is legal?
Well, we voted to add a couple of lines to the legal budget. And, and we also voted the budget based upon some of the breakout from this year.
Right. We actually did, we may have added a line, but more importantly, I think we actually funded the lines.
Yes, right.
Right. And so it wasn't, when I talked with her the other day, it wasn't clear to her that we actually wanted to remove the stuff that she identified this year. We already have existing lines that ought to be there, as we discover, in my opinion, we discover what's going on. The other thing that I will mention is that at three o'clock on Monday, the Multonboro watershed plant is being presented to the public at the Multonboro Public Safety Center. This is a plan similar to what a consultant is gonna be working on for our piece of the watershed going forward. And Steve had sent along, Steve Wingate had sent along the information on that last night. So anybody that's interested in attending, I'm hoping that somebody's gonna tape it, because I gotta be over in Millwall on Monday afternoon, so I'm. By that, I'm not saying, Joe, would you go to Multonboro and tape it? But I know Multonboro does tape a lot of their stuff.
Doctor's appointment, two forty-five, otherwise they're probably.
Oh, all right. So, and I'll try and touch these with Steve and see if somebody's gonna be. I am interested in seeing it, but I can't, I can't be there because of another commitment. All right. I'll shut up.
Yeah, I don't, after today's meeting, and your concerns specifically, I think we need to pay a little more attention during the next year on Jim, and what he's doing, what projects he's working on. I mean, I'm with you, I'm not interested in micromanaging him, but I'm also not interested in planning results in the same shape we were in this year come June or July. So if we can just take a quick look.
I'm working on a white paper about management, and let me come up with a draft. I may have a solution that does not cost us money. I wanna take advantage, you know, of what Jim does. Just where I live, I've seen the work that he's done for two private people on either side, and it's. on either side, and it's stellar work. But, and I've had this conversation with him. You know, we don't make available a computer, or a fax machine, or an office, or a telephone like we do for everybody else. And yet, in aggregate, he has the biggest budget. So, you know, I try, I try to walk that line like you do.
It could be, I mean, I'll give him a better, maybe he's just getting mixed messages. And I think maybe just clarification of all. You know, it's like the road striping question.
Yes.
I mean, we did, we did a lot of talking aloud, but the decision, I don't know whether Jim was following where we were heading in that direction. And that our ultimate conclusion was that we need to do something in two thousand eighteen, not in two thousand seventeen on that issue. And, and there's a lot more to it than just we'll strip the road this year.
Now, to give you an example, I just took a recent mini course on asphalt paving. And in half an hour, I was, it reinforced a lot of information. I would be willing, Jim's okay, and you're okay, and you're okay, and the CIP's okay, to have this gentleman come in at appropriate time for thirty to forty minutes at the fire station where he can use the computer. And it's absolutely amazing what, some of the things that are available for taking care of roads. And I would do it with anyone. He could be there to tape it and, and put it on YouTube. I mean, I just, it was a long time ago. I took engineering at the University of New Hampshire. But, for example, Osippe did five miles of what they call SAM, S-A-M. It's rubber and asphalt together. But it has to be on low-impact roads like Shirley Way, and it's less expensive.
I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be producing. I've always thought, you know, there's no reason we shouldn't have the best.
Yes. And my sense is, from the people I've talked to, have said that they're, we've turned the corner, that we need to spend more money on our roads. That's not a criticism. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, I just wanted to ask a question. It wasn't clear to me where it landed on beeper control. I know you only put seventy-five hundred extra in Jim's budget. And, and where that's going at this point. And I also wanted to add, and I don't know if any of you have been approached, but I have, in regards to anti-trapping of beavers.
There's someone every year that has that issue.
I've had a number of people, women.
And there's, I mean, I, I'm not, this was the first I heard of the beeper box, is what it's called.
But you haven't added any more money that was coordinated?
We haven't, we haven't, we didn't put any additional money in this year. Beaver control was always, as far as I know, been part of what the road agent deals with because it.